So it's 7:01. So this is Kristin Ferguson, Chair of the Concord Planning Board, and I'm going to call to order our meeting of November 24th, 2020. Subject to the changes in Mass General Law for March and Open Meeting Law, we are holding this meeting virtually, and this meeting is being recorded. Let's do a roll call of our planning board members that are here. So when I call your name, please say present, aye, or tell us a funny joke. Mr. Bozdet.
Oh, I had to be first. I don't want to make a joke off him. I'm here.
Mr. Saya.
Present.
Ms. McEnany.
Here.
Ms. Orbital. Here. And I see Ms. Miller just joined us. Let us know if you're on audio.
Yes, I'm on, and I will be visible once I turn my computer upside down. Sorry about that.
Take your time. And then let's just check, did Mr. Flint join us yet?
Yes.
And that's it. Okay, so we'll make a note when Burton joins us. So are anything else I need to say before we get started on agenda? You're recording the meeting. Okay, so we've got a couple of items on our agenda today. We're starting with the recommendation to the ZBA for 13B. And then we have had scheduled a public hearing at 7:30 for the subdivision, and that's going to be continued. So we'll talk about that when we get there. And then we've got several pieces of administrative business after that, including, as Kate was saying, kind of some planning for our joint meeting with the ZBA that's going to be in December, and also our work on the long-range plan action item. So lots of fun things. So we're going to start with our recommendation to the ZBA, and we do have some questions. Elizabeth was able to draft our recommendation so that we can review it and make any comments and changes to it. So I believe what we'll do is have a board discussion. And then if the applicant is here, if we have questions for the applicant, is that the case?
Yes.
Okay, so. So pardon? Yep, Patrick. So Patrick, we'll ask you some questions if we have anything in our discussion of the recommendation. And then also, if there's any remaining public comment, we'll be sure to allow for some time for that as well. So if everyone is looking at the letter that Elizabeth drafted about our recommendation, I want to open it up to the board for, you know, questions and discussions for us, and then we can have the applicant respond or Elizabeth as needed. I know one of the questions we had was about EV charging. So I think we want to do, the board wanted to kind of come to a consensus on what our request or condition was going to be about that.
So Kristin, if it's easier, I can just start. I did get some comments from Linda, and she had a couple of questions, but I'll just go through at least my report. And so, starting on page one, there's a typo in the third paragraph, the last sentence where the units will be two and it should read three bedroom. And then the next sentence, the existing special permit and site plan approval that was granted for the property was, instead of as, was part of the zoning board of appeals approval. And the second page, the second paragraph, where it talks about the new parallel parking on Beharal Street, it says, it does say another four spaces. Patrick had commented that somewhere it said two spaces, but I didn't, I didn't find that. So I highlighted that just so I didn't forget. And.
I actually read that wrong. I do see where there's adding another two spaces. So my apologies.
Okay, okay, no worries. And then for the first discussion, that starts on page four. And that is, as Kristin said, the final determination by the planning board as far as the EV charging stations. And then I believe Patrick has some update and comments regarding the building going to all-electric utilities.
Yeah, so I can address both of them at the same time. We have gone away from both the planning board session and the ZBA session where these questions were posed, and we've been looking into both. We got into the EV charging stations a little bit. I believe last time we were in front of the planning board. But there are some challenges to the administration of the charging stations that we, you know, we would ask that it wouldn't be a a ZBA or a zoning condition. Because it's a mixed-use building, we have to plan for both the commercial and the residential parking. The commercial parking presents problems because it's not a public parking lot. It is intended for the commercial tenants. And it would be difficult to, you know, monitor who's using the EV charging stations, how they're paying for it. Are they also patronizing the businesses while they're there, et cetera, et cetera? You know, for the residential use, you know, at Brookside Square, we do have electrical charging stations, but they are in the secured underground parking lot, excuse me, parking garage, which makes it a lot more straightforward to administer. For the residential here, it would be difficult, we believe, to, you know, administer it, you know, when it's in a surface parking lot, to restrict it to one or two users, make sure that nobody else is using it, how it's paid for, you know, you know, all those, those issues. What I would say is it took three or four years at Brookside for a resident to come forward and say that they actually use electrical, you know, cars, and that they would like a charging station that we were able to accommodate in the garage. If there is strong tenant demand, and we feel that we are losing opportunities for good tenants to be there because we don't have charging stations, we are going to figure out a way to, to make them work and to bring them in and to designate them in some way. It's not clear right now how we would do that. But I would ask that, you know, maybe it be more tenant-driven, more demand-driven, and, and we can, you know, we can address it as that demand comes. It would be difficult if, you know, similarly, if a tenant does not come to the table for a number of years, if there's a vehicle, you know, charging station just sitting on site that's not being used, you know, by any of the residents because there just isn't, you know, resident demand for it. And yet we're restricting other people, other visitors, you know, in the public from using it. I think that would garner some, some strong feelings amongst the public. So, you know, philosophically, we like charging stations. Two of our, you know, my business partners drive electrical vehicles. So we do think it is where the future is going. But we would just ask that it be a matter of tenant demand rather than a zoning condition. With regard to the, you know, 100% electric, you know, utilities, if you remember, it was a new issue that has been brought up more recently, you know, at the very tail end of what has been a three-year process. We have gone away from our meetings, and we've held a number of conversations with our experts, people we trust, who know this area much better than I know it and my partners know it. And we've been getting feedback, we've been getting a couple points of feedback, which are problematic for us. In talking with a couple of architects, we've been told that there is a perception, whether or not it's, it's real, there's definite perception that the end user, you know, incurs more cost for electric. Whether or not that is, will be the case long-term, and whether or not that is, you know, you know, reality is unclear. One of my architects says it's definitely more expensive for the end user. Another architect that I've talked with says the jury's out, and there are certain conditions where it depends. I've talked with property managers and leasing folks who have said that there is a definite negative connotation in the market when it comes to leasing these units, when it comes to things like cooking, fireplaces, et cetera, et cetera. I'm already in a pretty substantial disadvantage financially on this project with regard to the fact that I'm doing 25% affordable units. And it becomes difficult when I'm in a situation where I need to educate, you know, tenants and residents about, you know, the advantages and the benefits of 100% electrical if they don't already come to the table with that attitude. So again, philosophically, I don't have a problem with, you know, going in that direction in the future. I do think, you know, for me to commit at a zoning level is just a very difficult thing for me to do right now.
Okay, thanks, Patrick. I would note that Burton joined us, and he probably joined us right, right at the beginning of the meeting. So let me open it up to members of the planning board to ask any questions or to make comments on what we've just heard.
Not to steal the floor, but if nobody else raised their hand, I'll make a couple comments. So Patrick, thanks for your, your feedback and for looking into that. On the electrical piece, I will tell you that I can, that the, the perception that the end user encourages more, more cost on the first piece. As somebody that lives in a house that's heated by a heat pump, I will tell you, I laugh at the winters now because it is so much cheaper for me to heat my house using a heat pump and to cool it in the summer as well. That whereas I used to pride myself in wearing like a winter hat when I would go to bed at night when I lived in an old drafty home. I now live in a well-insulated heat pump home. And, and you would be stunned at how affordable it is. Putting aside the issue of climate change, right, which is what we're trying to do, what we're trying to address here. And the fact of the matter is, once you install the equipment in a, in a, in a building, you know, you're building a building that's going to be there. And hopefully, you know, it'll be a quality building that doesn't need to be redone for 40 or 50 years. And we're talking about having to change everything by 2030 or by 2050. The, the perception significantly lags to reality in terms of cost. The other piece, in terms of the, the negative connotation in the market around, and that also applies, of course, for the, the parking infrastructure. I'm in a, in a, in a development that was built right as these things were changing. I benefited from getting electric heat, but I do, I can't plug my car in. And going back and plugging that car in, you know, I'm going to be looking at paying $2,000, $5,000, whatever it is, it's thousands of dollars to get a plug. Whereas it would have been hundreds if it had been done at the, at the time of construction. On the negative connotation in the market, yeah, I get it. People think, they think of electric, they think of baseboard heating, they think of those old stoves that have the, you know, the, 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 the resistance heating. And, and that's not where the technology is today. You, you've got a heat pump with, with, with mini splits, and you've got a induction stove that is, exceeds in every respect a gas stove. It's just, it's literally going from, you know, mid-1950s technology to 21st century technology. We had a recent proposal in front of this committee where it's a bank building, and they, they investigated and saw that they could do it with, with heat pump, all-electric technology. And what they were dealing with there is what you've got on your ground floor, which is expanses of windows, which is, right, a huge factor in designing your overall energy system. They were able to make it work. I think instead of thinking of this as a negative connotation or something that's holding you back, you know, is going to make it a harder sell, this becomes a selling point, if you know how to speak of it correctly. I would, in terms of the fellow members of the planning board, you know, I think this is a really good project. I think Patrick's done an amazing job of engaging with the community and improving it to meet what the community is looking for. But I would also think, you know, we've got to think, you know, from going forward, as we've been doing for the last two years, that this is something we really need to lead on. And, and each project we approve that doesn't have this requirement is something that we have, will then have to compensate for in our next 50 years of planning. That's all, that's all I've got.
So if I, if I can respond to that real quick.
But Patrick, before you do that, real quick, could I just let Elizabeth? I just want to make sure that we're hearing what you have to say first.
Thank you. The only point I was going to make is, well, one, in understanding the perception, and especially with architects. But whether those architects are utilizing information and data when it's a municipal light plant and, and not national grid or ever-source, I think is a significant difference. And I can go back and check with CMLP. I, I, I would be shocked if they did not have, you know, specific data on, you know, their cost as far as all-electric compared to, you know, ever-source or national grid. So it may be that the board, you know, makes a recommendation that, you know, this be between now and the Board of Appeals does not meet till December 17th. There could be, you know, further investigation, you know, into that perception to alleviate some of the issues and concerns.
Thanks. And Patrick, before you respond, I just, I'd like to hear from the other members of the planning board about a little more discussion about what, what Burton said, and then, and then we'll get right back to you. But Nathan?
Yeah, Elizabeth, Elizabeth said one of the things I was going to say, which was just the comparison between a municipal light plant and a national grid type entity. And also just to echo what, what Burton was saying. I mean, we also live in a house that is not new, but it does have a heat pump, heating and cooling, and it is far, far cheaper than friends and family that use gas or oil. And so that's just something to think about. And also, as Burton said, that, you know, for, for someone potentially looking to live in, you know, the center of West Concord, there is probably a high chance that, you know, that the typical client looking to lease there is going to be a little bit different than, say, an Avalon that's just in a random spot. So I think, you know, again, to Burton's point, selling that aspect, that it's a greener building, I think would, you know, really tie into the type of clientele that's going to be looking in that particular area. And yeah, I think that's, that's the only thing. Oh, the electric, the charging stations. Yeah, again, Burton captured this very well, but, you know, the, the cost of adding that in later, and the fact that, that, that need is only going to grow and grow very quickly over the next five to 10 years. You know, it's something you definitely, I would think, would want to have there. And again, is another potential, you know, leasing selling point for, for the residents that might move there.
Thanks, Nathan. Haley, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, there's nothing new I want to add, but just, you know, ditto what Burton said and Nathan, you know, especially on the perception. You know, I think Burton captured it well, but, you know, half the people I meet, at least, that in West Concord work in clean tech or, you know, sustainability, and it's just the, the type of folks that want to live in Concord are, are looking exactly for that type of building, you know.
If I may make one last point, Kristin and Patrick, you know, to expand on what Elizabeth said, in working with a, a town utility, the town, the town of Concord is currently actually actively engaged in trying to prove as a concept, electric vehicle charging in multifamily housing. In fact, if you were, you know, if your project had gone through a year ago, it might have been eligible for grants that are, they're currently going through a cycle of to help defray the cost. I point that out because unlike, you know, working with, I don't know, national grid, or whom I've not worked with, the, the electric light plant is actively engaged in seeking to implement town goals of reducing our greenhouse gas and global warming impact. And, and the agency that, the part of the town that's been most advanced in being able to do that is the light plant. And so they have taken a proactive role in seeking solutions for being able to expand electric vehicle charging and electric, electric heat and cooling, and are a good partner to work with. So it may be the case that you go with them, and they say, yeah, we're going to, we can, we can get you going. I mean, you'll need an engineer, right, to design it, but we can get you going down that path. And, and it's something that is, we're lucky to have in Concord, and we want to make sure in furtherance of our, of our long, long-range plan that we're making use of that, so.
Thanks. Kate Allen or Linda, did you have anything specific about these, this topic right now? Patrick, I, I really do appreciate the, the work that you've done to iterate the design and really work with people in the town on this. And, and we absolutely appreciate the 25% of the units being affordable units and, and the financial picture that, you know, that, that puts you in. So I don't want you to think that we're making this, this request lightly, coming from our perspective as the planning board, really working toward the, the long-range goals of the town. We do, I, I want to speak on behalf of everybody, but I certainly do see this as kind of that exemplary project of the mixed-use development of many things that, that stands for the long-range plan. And, and so, you know, it's, it's my opinion, you know, based on the objections that you have about the electric, building electrification, you know, of course, you're going to hear that change is hard for people, particularly architects and designers who have always designed with, you know, older appliances and mechanical systems. And property managers that have only sold one thing. So I'm not discounting any of those anecdotes that you are bringing and the, and the data points that they bring. But, but building electrification is happening to advance us to our, to our goals, and we would really like to see your building do that and really be an advantage for the, all of the tenants in it. And, and I believe that that is going to be the case. My feeling on the EV charger, and I completely agree with, with, you know, other EV owners, and I am too, about the challenges of finding charging if it's not, you know, directly in your multifamily building. I understand the complexities, I think, of where you are, where you could have some, you know, that, that, that are more complex. And, you know, I would have a discussion with the planning board, but, but I could conceive the EV charger until there's, you know, a more specific solution for the, for the residents. But I think the building electrification is, is pretty critical. And regarding the EV charging, can the tenants of the 13B, can they charge in the underground parking at Brookside? And then I'll, I'll let you respond to the, the comments.
No, they're not able to charge in at Brookside.
Um, Kristin, one possibility, I know across from our building at Millbrook area on the gas station side by Trails and Cafe, and also the EV charging station that's behind the townhouse, they're locked. The EV charging station at Trails and Cafe is one particular tenant in that building who had that put in, and the one behind the townhouse is also locked. So if, you know, while it's being built, you know, working with CMLP, you could locate one station or in the back corner of, you know, a dual station, they can, they can be locked, and, you know, a key provided to tenants, whether it's commercial. And if the space is open and the person gets there, you know, especially for residential, because at night, you know, there's going to, you know, presumably be, you know, the parking lot will be more open for tenants, and they could park there. And so that, that also might be an option.
Thanks. And Patrick, I know you've been listening to kind of all of our comments, and it's, it's clear where we stand. But yes, please, we'd like to hear your response.
Sure. So with regard to the 100% electrical, I'm in no position to disagree with anything that anyone has said. And I'm not taking the position at all that it's not cost-effective, that it's not, you know, a big benefit to the, to the end user. What I'm saying is, I don't know enough about it. I've now been at this process on 13B for three years. It's kind of a difficult situation to be in, you know, at this stage because we've gone through three years and countless issues that we've gotten over. And, you know, I hope I've displayed the willingness thus far to work with the town and the residents on everything and anything that has come up. So I'm not taking a position now that, you know, absolutely not, I'm not doing this. It's just, it's, it's so late in the game, and I haven't had, this has just come up in the last few weeks. I had not been aware that this was a, a movement, you know, that the town was focused on. And I'm not saying I won't do it, especially if, as we, you know, study it and look into it, we find that there is a clear benefit to our renters that we can, you know, articulate to them and be very clear on. If there is a clear benefit to our renters, we are all for that. I just, I can't commit at this stage to going back to my investors, partners, and say that I can represent to them that this is, you know, this won't impact us. There, there's only so much a renter will pay, all in between utility costs and rent. And like I said, not to beat a dead drum, I'm already, you know, underwater on 25% of the units. And to have a potential cap on income coming in, you know, it puts me in a very difficult position to have to commit to that in a zoning condition.
Okay, thank you. I guess before, before the board kind of, well, we can either make a decision on this or we can kind of, on this particular aspect, or we can kind of continue down the report. Or there was just kind of, um, there was a little bit more information that we were thinking about first. So can we continue down the report? So we kind of have the full picture, and then we'll make a decision together about how to proceed with the recommendation. Okay?
So those were the only two remaining issues for the board to discuss.
Okay, I see. It was, it appeared in a couple spots.
Linda also made one additional suggestion on Page six. Under 11.8.5A, the third paragraph, the planning board believes that because the site is. the planning board believes that because the site is located at a roadway intersection with a parking lot on the other two sides in an established commercial district and on the north side of the street, it will not have a significant impact on views light and air. So it would be adding on the north side of the street. And yeah, the only outstanding issue is the EV charging and the electric utilities. But I believe Linda had a couple of other.
She had a couple of other minor questions.
Linda, you're going to have to like move closer or turn your volume up or something.
Can you hear me better now?
Thank you.
Okay. I had two other questions. One had to do with, would the, or maybe three questions, would the unit, units, the residential units have laundry in them?
Yes.
And would those be vented in an exterior fashion?
Yes.
And where would the venting go?
Uh, most likely horizontally. At Brookside, we went vertically through the roof. Personally, I love the fact that it's going vertically. But I can tell you it was an absolute nightmare. Can't tell you how much of a nightmare it was during construction when you go through a winter and you have vertical chases that are open, but you have significant snow on the roof. So if I had my druthers, I would love to run them vertically and I will do my best to run them vertically because I think it's, it's great, but it does add significant, significant challenges to actually executing.
I can appreciate that. I was just thinking in terms of, you know, that this public walkway is right next to the building and also if you have any tenants that would be restaurants or whatever, just that, you know, nobody doesn't like the smell of fresh laundry, but it might, in terms of the air quality or ambiance of the building, I was just thinking that if you were venting it, it might be more attractive to go through a vertical, but that's, that was just a point to bring up. Another question I had was if we've discussed deliveries and any constraints in terms of where and when deliveries again, you know, more to the retail clients, would, would there be deliveries during the day to Commonwealth Avenue? I mean, would you have large tractor trailers parked on Commonwealth Avenue making deliveries or should there be restraints on that?
So we anticipate these will be small tenants. The way the, the commercial space is broken up with a common hallway that runs front to back through the middle of the building. The 5,250 square feet may broke, be broken up into two tenants or possibly four tenants. And the sizes, those tenants will most likely require deliveries by smaller vehicles. You know, just like.
We're all familiar with, with Starbucks on, on Thorough Street. And it's a small coffee shop, but they receive an 18 wheeler pretty much every night.
We can restrict that in our leases and we're fine, you know, restricting 18 wheelers. And we can also, you know, we can, we can restrict that within our leases. And then, you know, we see the, the deliveries being done in the, the back rear, you know, north parking lot rather than on Commonwealth Ave. You know, if a truck pulls up right in front, if there are available spaces, we would, we would, you know, require it within the leases for deliveries to occur in the parking lot.
So what I, given the issues that the town does deal with at other locations, I think the findings that the board has to make in for special permit and even site plan approval that the board can recommend that deliveries shall be made within the parking lot or the parking spaces along Beharal Street and shall not be made from Commonwealth Avenue.
We'd be agreeable to that.
And then to Linda's comment about the venting of the dryers, I, I agree as far as the venting towards the public sidewalks and whether, you know, it can be, the venting is either through the north or east side of the building or through the roof. I think that will be especially true if, you know, there may be some small restaurant that may go into, you know, one of the small spaces. And then making sure that that venting does not go towards the south or west side of the building.
If, if there's a restaurant, it would definitely vent through the roof. We would not vent it horizontally in the case of a restaurant.
Well, so that comes down to, we experienced that with the possibility for the restaurant at Brookside Square where that commercial space there, the possibility of venting through the roof wasn't there. It was going to have to come out the side, so.
Actually, if, not to, you know, belabor the point, we, we, we built at Brookside and it is there today, a black iron duct through, through the residential in anticipation of that restaurant space. We were not going to vent through the side.
Okay. So Elizabeth, do we need two conditions for those two things, the deliveries and the venting?
Yep. And so I'll, I'll insert that into where the appropriate findings need to be made and then put that in as a condition regarding, you know, the venting. It may be all venting shall be on the north or east side of the building or through the roof. And then the comments in the about deliveries and no deliveries on Commonwealth Ave.
Elizabeth, would it be possible to do the west side of the building as well or just the east and the north?
The west side would be the public sidewalk over on Beharal Street. Yes.
That's the east side.
The south side. So, so it would be the west and the, not on the west or the south side. The north side is the, is the one that faces towards one, the parking lot for 152. So it would be through the north or the east side or the roof.
Okay.
But I will, I will verify on a map that has a north arrow on it and I'll get it right. So.
Because we're trying, because we're trying to avoid venting into public spaces or disturbing residential tenants. Is that what the goal is?
Well, venting on, over the public sidewalks.
Um, okay. Linda, did you have other questions?
Thank you. I think that's it. Thank you.
So I wanted, I want to open it up to public comment to see if we have a few public comments before the board kind of finishes their deliberation, if that's okay. So if you have a comment, you can use the raise hand function. And then I will call on you and please state your name and your address for the record. And then, so we will unmute you to do so. So I think I see Sue Felshen. So if someone can unmute her.
Hi, Sue Felshen, 19 Sunnyside Lane. Just a quick comment, adding on to what Burton said about all electric. I don't want to burden the applicant who has really worked very hard to improve this proposal, but I do wonder about the opinions on electric being a problem. I can well see that advertising the building is all electric could be a problem. But phrasing it as heat pumps and induction stoves, neither of which use the word electric, would tend to avoid people's freak out over old fashioned electric stuff, which was admittedly not so great. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Susan was, I'm sorry, Susan. Thank you. And when you're able to unmute, here you are. I think we can hear you now.
Yep. Hi, it's Susan Malodizanik. I live at 392 Border Road and I'm also a member of the West Concord Advisory Committee. I am speaking on my own behalf with my statement here. I just want to say that, you know, multifamily buildings that are all electric are being built in Massachusetts right now. And they are being built at a like zero to 1% increase over the regular cost that it might ordinarily cost to put a building that's equipped with fossil fuel technology in. So the, the cost is really not as big a burden as it might seem. And then I noticed you all were just talking about venting, venting for clothes dryers at least. You don't need to do it when you have your all electric heat pump clothes dryer. So the, the vents don't even come into the, the discussion. You don't need it for those particular pieces of equipment. So I just wanted to urge the board to consider that, you know, we are at a crossroads and we, we want to do the right thing for our town. And we want to invoke the, the values that I think our town has decided that, that they want to have represented when we have new buildings put in. This is a perfect chance to have a, you know, a new construction building equipped with electric utilities all around, probably not as great an expense as, as Patrick believes. But I'm happy to help in whatever capacity I can to hook Patrick up with the right people who can help him build the building that we all love very much, but just in an electric incarnation.
Thank you. Um, Jack Madigan.
Sorry about that. Three Street. My question was just regarding the parking. I understand that it's going to be a one and a half spot per unit for parking, for the parking spots is what we're requiring. Is that going to be anywhere on the lease? And is it going to be a placard that goes into someone's car? I'm just nervous about the people because it is next to the train. They park there during the day, then that spot is not, then that spot is not come up here. That spot is not available during the day. If they take the train into town, so that means one less spot. I was just wondering, is there any way we could limit that? Otherwise, I do like the building and Patrick, great job on a lot of that stuff. I'm just concerned with the parking in West Concord. Hasn't been a problem during the pandemic, but as we enter reality again in the next year or so, and once construction and everything, it's going to be an issue with, are the retail spots that are there, are those people able to park behind the building? Or are they all taking up now the spots that are on Commonwealth Ave as well as tenants and friends and things like that? Is there any way we could put some sort of stipulation on the lease of the clients? I've lived in apartment buildings in Boston where you are only allowed to have one vehicle per apartment, that type of thing. And I just wanted to know if there was any way we could limit that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Gary Kleman.
Okay, can you hear me now? Sorry. So I already submitted some written comments, so you, I won't reiterate what I already said in writing. I just wanted to add on the one point about perception. I've seen a lot of PRDs and developments in Concord and I guess I can turn on my video. I've seen a lot of PRDs and developments in Concord over the years. And my impression is that those which are more sustainable and more green actually sell for a premium relative to other developments that I've seen that have traditional construction. You know, whether it's Riverwalk or, you know, Mill Run now, I think that they have had no problems selling out and selling and commanding a greater price when they are, have more sustainable features often. Just wanted to offer that.
Thank you. I'm, I think, I think we're all, we're all singing the same tune. And I think Patrick, even, even you are too, but you, you've got to look through it through your lens and that you've been working on for the last three years. I don't see any other hands up for public comment. So I'll, we'll turn it back to the board. Our, what we're doing tonight is we need to make a motion for the recommendation. And I think Elizabeth has captured everything in her, in the draft. We have two more conditions that we're going to add about the venting and the parking for deliveries. And we've had extensive discussion about EV charging and and all electric buildings. So, you know, the question becomes what as the planning board can we do to really help, help this project to further the goals for the town? So within our, within our purview, you know, what are we able to do? And I don't know, Elizabeth, I don't know if you can comment on that. You know, Patrick, I know that you're, you're willing to do these things that we're asking, but at the same time, you know, we don't have any guarantees that, you know, that, that the opinions that you hear tonight are going to outweigh, you know, one or two architects' opinions so that you do pursue all electric.
Um, so I'm understanding the, you know, the position of the town and, you know, the comments that the board made and, you know, people's, you know, personal position is, you know, it's very clear from a zoning and regulatory stance. I, I don't believe the town has the ability to tell somebody that they cannot hook up to gas if, you know, that, that gas line exists in Commonwealth Ave. But what I'd like to, what I'd like to suggest is that the, the board's recommendation, you know, highlight that the, you know, the board had an extensive discussion with the applicant, you know, regarding this. Put in the points that Patrick made and, you know, the conversation, you know, that the board has had. And I will contact CMLP tomorrow, see if we can, you know, get additional information that can be Patrick and his team can look at possibly before the 17th. But also try to, you know, think about, you know, and, and maybe it's, you know, you can't get to an actual condition that requires it, but maybe we can get to a point, at least in the special permit, that, you know, just highlights this, the importance of this as a community and just, you know, the applicant as they move forward with construction and construction and, I don't know, drawings continually to look into the possibility for all electric. And, you know, work with CMLP on the feasibility and, you know, financial feasibility of that for the project, but I don't think. Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. I think, you know, when we're coming at it from the perspective of the board and we really are trying to, you know, execute whatever actions we can take to fulfill the long range plan. You know, we want to do that within our purview. So, you know, Patrick, you, you have heard, I think, our, our sound reasoning as well as the will of the people that have been kind of working with you from West Concord Advisory Committee for, for that long way. Elizabeth, I, I think that's a great idea to really include that language in there and I'll, I'll ask the board if they are comfortable with that as well. And Patrick, I think it's really important that you look at this project as really, you know, being a leading project in the area for kind of this next generation of, of buildings and, and don't take that lightly.
Elizabeth, if I may, it's it's a little unclear the the scope of the zoning relief that's been being requested here, right? So this is a special permit on parking and height, right? That's the scope of it?
Parking. Well, yes. So parking height and open space.
Parking height and open space. And so it's your belief that because of the of the the constraints we live in within the the building, the the building code, that under the current zoning code is as we're allowed to operate under, we can't dictate that he can't hook up to gas. But is it not directly related to the parking relief that we might have specifications around the parking?
Specifications around the
specification and say, we're going to grant you a waiver of and I'll be I'll be totally candid with you, Patrick. I think it makes way more sense to focus on the infrastructure in the building now. I think my last house that had 110 year old knob and tube wiring in it. If you put a gas heater in this, it's going to be there for the next 100 years. The parking is a short putt, but at the same time, if Elizabeth, if you're telling us that we're constrained in terms of what we can dictate for these clean energy requirements. I'm wondering, is it is is the electric parking not directly related to the zoning relief? The the requirement that a parking space have have a charger directly related to the zoning relief and and providing a waiver on on the number of parking spaces that's required?
I I I think you can make that argument. You know, whether it would, you know, stand up in court, not I'm not saying that that's where this is going.
I don't want to go there. Yeah.
But as far as the EV charging station, I I think you could you could probably make that nexus that would be needed for the granting of relief. And I think, you know, working with CMLP, they are going to be doing significant work to bring, you know, power and, you know, transformer for, you know, this building and that installing one EV charging station that has a lock on it, you know, is is not a significant lift.
Yeah.
My my previous comments were, I don't think the board has the ability to condition a project that it has to be all electric.
Right. Okay.
Elizabeth, what about, you know, some sort of like, I don't know, working group or, you know, we've had, there are another individuals who do this for a living and work in this for, you know, industry for a living and like can offer resources. And so some of them are like, you know, contingent on, you know, a working group effort to like, you know, understand if this could get to cost neutral from the builder's perspective. You know, and, you know, good faith effort, blah, blah, blah. It's not a requirement, but at least, you know, it sounds like if we can't require it and then we do nothing else, it's very likely not to get done at the end of the day. Like, that's just the unfortunate reality of it. So but if we can keep, you know, relevant members of Concord involved and CMLP, et cetera, then, you know, it has a better chance of of getting done and not being forgotten.
I I do not think the board has the ability to condition a project to require an applicant to work with any working group. Or, you know, condition the project to, you know, have an applicant, you know, required to work with the Climate Action Advisory Group to investigate whether all electric is financially feasible. I think that goes far beyond the scope of the planning board under zoning. And gets into that the same current realm that we had to deal with. You know, the warrant article, you know, not allowing extension of, you know, fossil fuel lines. It's my understanding as far as, you know, the state and the courts, you know, there is a distinct separation between zoning and the building code, you know. We have the stretch code. So I I don't believe that that's a possibility. I I do believe that expanding this discussion and, you know, obviously, we've been at this for an hour. I I think Patrick understands, you know, the the breadth and depth of, you know, this one single issue for almost an hour. But you are talking about an applicant who's been at this for almost three years. So it it's not somebody who's just coming in and saying, this is what I'm going to do. And you can't make me. I mean, there is, I I think that I can contact CMLP. I'm sure that they have cost analysis specific to Concord and the municipal light plant. And from that perspective, you know, if it is, you know, cost neutral, then there's no reason I I can't see that, you know, Patrick wouldn't do that. I also think part of it is, again, you know, that learning curve. You know, we have Riverwalk, but we have Mill Run Commons. That was just permitted, you know, three, three, four months ago. It's my understanding that they're half sold and interest in the remaining already. So and and that is the now communities, you know, that's one of their main focuses, you know, the energy savings and net zero. And so the thought that there isn't, you know, that they're not going to be, you know, saleable or rentable. I I don't think that's true for this community. So so that's my, that's my opinion.
So Elizabeth, if I may sort of wrap, you know, wrap that around. I think what you're saying is that you believe that we're capable within the recommendation letter to the zoning board of appeals to make a strong recommendation that the applicant consider all electric utilities in the building. And maybe something a little bit stronger on the on the on electric charging in the parking spaces. But that's about the extent of what we can ask of the applicant based upon our authority as a planning board, isn't it?
I I think definitely make, you know, a stronger point on the all electric and and as Hallie said, you know, even put it in there that, you know, the applicant, you know, has stated they would, you know, will continue to, you know, look into this, you know, from a construction and feasibility standpoint. And I think that's about as far as you can go on that aspect.
Yeah.
I I think the EV charging station is, I mean, it's it's not a heavy lift. You know, it's a couple hundred dollars while CMLP is doing the site work. And, you know, they can be locked. If and, you know, if if nobody's using it, it doesn't have a cost. So you can provide keys to certain tenants that want to use it and have the tenants realize, you know, it's first come, first served. So I I don't think that is that big of an issue as far as because there is relief for parking being requested.
Yeah. Okay. So Kristen, if I may, you know, I I think that what the takeaway is in part, some of the message that that Gary Kleiman who submitted a letter, you know, that we had from there is that we we were unfortunately have our hands somewhat tied by the zoning code. In the future, we can look to incentives for developers where we could reward their ability to go beyond the zoning code in terms of electrical infrastructure, but we don't have that baked into our into our code right now. I'm going to pause because Patrick, you're raising your hand.
If the board be willing to reduce the affordable from from two to one, I would, I would consider that.
I think I think I would have a hard time shopping on Main Street and West Concord if we agreed to that. Patrick, I it's a, I mean, I appreciate the the suggestions, but I think I think if we look at the order of priorities here, that the what you're doing on affordable is is such a such a good thing for the town that that's that 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 would be a hard horse to trade. But what I would like to suggest is that we we adopt the the recommendation letter that was put together with the two additional requirements that Linda suggested and Elizabeth captured with a recommendation that we it it's a board's recommendation that that the developer investigate electric utilities. I I I'm going to leave it for others to suggest where we come out on that on the electric charging. But I it's a last word, Patrick, I would I would say that I think if you investigate this and work with people who are looking at what the next thing is, you you might find yourself saving some money by following the the recommendation here. And 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 if not saving money upfront, saving money over time or or getting a higher return on your investment. Anybody else have thoughts on the on the parking or the letter recommendation?
All right. Go ahead, Kate.
I was just going to note to to my colleagues on the board, just the importance of what Patrick said about the the timing for him of this coming in. Just to remind us all that we tend, the the impacts of projects tend to be in sharpest relief when they're about to be, when we're about to make a decision. That's the worst time to try to impact projects like this. So let's just, I I just think I just don't want to lose Patrick's comment there. Just to remind us that this has got to be, we weren't thinking this way three years ago, for sure. But, you know, as we as new projects come in, like, let's have this be front and center. That's all I wanted to say.
And I think that will be good for discussion a little bit later tonight.
There you go.
We're going to talk about that. So thank you. I think that's I think it's important and relevant to this. So Burton, were did you make a motion? Because it it sounded like one to me, but I just want to make sure.
I could tighten that up a little bit. Sure, I I'll make a motion. I I would, I I would make a motion that we recommend to the zoning board of appeals and Elizabeth, forgive me, I'm not looking at your, I'm winging it here, that we recommend the the parking height and what we we recommend and open space that we recommend the approval of the applicants.
Is it is it an amendment of a special permit and site plan approval for a waiver to open space and a height requirements?
There we go.
And decrease in the required amount of parking.
And decrease in the required amount of parking.
For a combined business residence.
For combined business residence. Thank you. And with with the two additions that you described earlier with respect to deliveries and venting on the sides of the building as as recommended by Linda. And with the addition of language, making a strong recommendation that the applicant consider all electric utilities and electric vehicle accommodations for electric vehicle charging.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Nathan. All right, I'll go around. Ms. McAnaney.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Orbital.
Yes.
Mr. Flint.
Yes.
Mr. Bosdett.
Yes.
Mr. Seah.
Yes.
And this is Kristen Ferguson. Yes. So Patrick, thank you for sticking with everybody during the process. You know, this is now going to the zone, our recommendation will go to the zoning board of appeals and, you know, obviously, we will all be really looking forward to the project. And so thank you for your continued work with the community.
I appreciate everyone's time and efforts. So.
Right. Thank you. And thanks, Elizabeth, for making those changes to the recommendation.
Good night.
Good night, Patrick. Thank you. Um, our next item at 7:30. What is the subdivision and the applicant has requested a continuous without continuance without discussion to December 8. And we have time on our calendar on December 8 at 8:00 PM because we have a couple of other items before that.
So Kristen, it's actually, you would need to open the public hearing and then immediately continue it without discussion.
Okay.
To go ahead.
Do I get to continue it or do I need a motion to continue?
You would open it and request a motion.
Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing on on to review the definitive subdivision plan, application of Simes Development and Permitting LLC for 16 lot subdivision of land at 11B, 146B and 1442 Main Street and 110 Highland Street. And then I would entertain a motion to continue without discussion to December 8, 2020 at at 8:00 PM. And we're doing that because the applicant has submitted some additional materials. And the town engineering department has not had a chance to review those. And so by the 8, we would have a chance to see the town's engineers updated review. And and also just with that, the the applicant has requested or an extended time extension to file until December 30. Can we do that in one motion? Could somebody make one motion for both of those things, Elizabeth? Okay, so we could have one motion to continue the public hearing to December 8 at 8:00. And then also grant the time extension to December 30, 2020. Is there such a motion?
Kristen, I'll make a a motion to that we extend the public hearing.
Continue.
Continue the public hearing. Thank you for 11B, 4146B and 1442 Main Street, 110 Highland Street to December, was it 8th at 8:00 PM? And 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 accept the extension. Yeah.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Linda. Ms. McAnaney.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Orbital. Mr. Flint.
Yes.
Mr. Seah.
Yes.
Mr. Bosdett.
I'm saying.
And this is Ms. Ferguson. Yes. Okay, so we will hear about that project on the 8th and hopefully review some information before then. So items remaining for tonight are, we've got an approval not required that Elizabeth can tell us about. And then we're going to talk a little bit about our our action items from the long range plan, which is kind of a continuation of, it's good segue what we have been talking about as well as what we're going to talk about with the our joint ZBA meeting and how we can move that forward. So Elizabeth, do you need to share your screen for the A and R?
I do, and it'll just take me a minute. Okay. Getting better. It still just takes quite a few clicks. So this is an approval not required plan submitted for, it's actually one Sudbury Road. This is the intersection of Main Street, Sudbury Road. This is the library property right here, Stowe Street. The parking lot that shared with the umbrella off Stowe Street. And let me see if I can, I can zoom in. This is an oversized piece of property. It extends along Sudbury Road and then down this property line back here, up to that corner and back. So what they are proposing to do is they have worked with the butter at the corner of Stowe Street and Sudbury Road to do a land swap. Sudbury Road, they will be providing this little bit of frontage right here. So extending from this property line over to here. And then one Sudbury Road will be providing parcel A to extend the lot for lot A outwards. Currently for lot A, the property line is back here. And then dividing off this lot, which will have 83.93 feet of 83.93 feet of frontage and dividing off 1A. And this, so this would be a new building lot. The properties in the resident C-zone district, it requires 10,000 square feet of area and 80 feet of frontage. Lot 2A will also utilize the lot width exception. It has the required frontage alongside Sudbury Road. And then it narrows down to about, I can't read that, but I think it's 60, 69, well. I'll zoom in, 65 feet at this point. And what they will be required to do is the house that will be presumably built back here. The front wall of the house, the lot width will need to be at least 80 feet. So a house would not be able to be put in this location because the lot is not wide enough. But other than that, each both lots have the required frontage and required area. And lot A retains the required frontage and area.
And so that that new to be built home would be accessed from Sudbury Road?
Correct.
And and there is a lot number that it could have on Sudbury Road?
As far as a house number?
Yeah.
Yep. So the building commissioner is the person who town who grants house numbers. It's based off the stationing in the road. So this is one, you know, Sudbury Road. And then, you know, 100 feet, it would go to 10, probably 10 Sudbury Road.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, any questions before there is a somebody has a motion? Any questions for Elizabeth? Burton, you're muted.
Elizabeth, do you know where the driveways are on that plan? I'm just wondering whether there's an easement required when they remove the property line?
Uh, an easement would not be required, no. It has 80 feet of frontage on Sudbury Road. Oh, you mean the current driveway for one?
Yeah, the the house that's giving up the frontage. I'm wondering whether where their driveway is, is.
I think it's on, it might be on Stowe Street.
It's on, yeah, it's on Stowe.
I, I see.
For 1 Sudbury?
No, the other side, the corner of Stowe and Sudbury.
The house on the corner of Stowe and Sudbury faces Sudbury, faces Stowe Road and their driveway is on Stowe Road.
And you're still sharing your screen, Elizabeth? I didn't know if you were trying to pull up a picture again.
I was.
Okay.
I see. Okay, I am looking on my, you know, my map here and I think I see it. Okay, yeah, it's on Stowe Street. So Elizabeth, if I'm not mistaken, this is that lot that was identified as the last possible PRD lot in in Concord Center, right?
It, it was the last PRD lot.
Possible, yeah, potential.
Potential. Okay. So and and the frontage is, what is requirement here is 90 feet, is that right?
Eighty feet.
Eighty feet. Okay, so I got.
Any other questions, good questions? If not, there is a motion that can be made. It's on the, on the memo. Does anybody else have their memo open? Burton's doing a lot of work tonight.
It's too heartbreaking. I can't do it. It's such a beautiful property. You know?
Well, it, it.
I can't make the motion. Somebody else do it.
I will say, given the the work that went into making this happen is by far a much better outcome.
Oh, I don't, okay.
I'd make a motion to endorse the plan for the Anne Pickering Lang Family Trust and Rosa C. Hollowell and Mark B. Stein dated November 19, 2020. As approval not required because the plan is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has the required area and frontage on an adequate public way and authorize the chair, clerk, or town planner to endorse the plan.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Nathan, second. Any other discussion? Okay, and Ms. Orbital?
Yes.
Mr. Seah?
Yes.
Ms. McEnany?
Abstain.
Mr. Flint?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? I'm sorry, did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Bosdette?
Yes.
And this is Ms. Ferguson, yes. All right, well, approval not required is hard because.
This one doesn't sting as badly as the one that cut the the trail off that Linda was commenting on from a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings ago. This is what it is.
So we do have a couple of meeting minutes. Do you want to, do you want to knock off the meeting minutes and then go to the discussion? Were there any comments on the meeting minutes of October 10, 2020? And Linda, I have to say, by the way, your attention to detail on the planners report and finding typos is much appreciated. And we would, we would love that, those eyes on the minutes as well. We did lose our very good copy editor in when Matt Johnson went to the planning board. So that that position is available.
I have to say, I thought the minutes were brilliant, so. They're great.
Excellent. Okay, so that's October 10, October 6. Any other comments or questions before we entertain a motion to accept those minutes? Okay, anybody, anybody willing to make a motion?
Kristen, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the planning board meeting of October 6, 2020 as prepared for review.
Second?
Second.
Linda, seconds. Ms. McEnany? Mr. Seah? Ms. Orbital?
Yes.
Mr. Flint? Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bosdette?
Yes.
And it's Ms. Ferguson, yes.
Just for the future, I think you actually have to say yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think, I think I saw her say yes. We can do closed caption. October 20th minutes. Were there questions or comments? Okay, hearing, hearing no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 20, 2020. Who would like to so moved?
I was actually going to do, but so moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. McEnany?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Seah?
Yes.
Ms.? Yes, Mr. Flint?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bosdette?
Yes.
And this is Kristen Ferguson, yes. Okay, so meeting minutes done. Thank you very much for to Nancy and Elizabeth for getting those out so promptly. So the last couple of things that we're talking about are important ones. And Elizabeth has, we've kind of been finessing this action item document that we looked at, I think it was on the 20th. And again, to remind everybody who's either on the phone or new to the committee, the long range plan had a very long list of action items at the end assigned to various boards and sometimes multiple boards. And we're trying to whittle that away to, you know, what the planning board, you know, should and can be working on in the near term and the next one to three years and then a little bit longer than that. So we have some sort of a a roadmap for what we want to be working towards. And basically, what one of the charges of the planning board is is to make any amendments to zoning bylaws or in theory, new, new bylaws if needed to move us toward that goal. And so as we talked about last time, town meeting is going to happen in June. So we have some time if we need to do some writing for the warrant article. But we don't have a lot of time and we need to figure out, you know, what, if anything, needs to be written and and done. And so Elizabeth has kind of highlighted some of the items on our list to let us know what items are in progress and what some of those other ones that we can really focus on. And why this is relevant to both the discussion we had earlier about all electric homes. We know that in other towns proposed bylaws to restrict fossil fuel usage in new buildings were struck down by the attorney general. So we need to think about other ways to other ways to really achieve our goals over the next certainly decade. Gary Kleiman did submit a letter and he's been doing some work with Alice Kaufman, and I'm not even sure who else. And Gary, I'm sure we'll hear from you at public comment. To look at different strategies that the board can use and they could be, you know, incentives and they could also be the opposite of incentives as well to really, you know, get our development in the direction that we're going to. So we're going to kind of talk about all that together. And then after that discussion, we'll segue into, you know, how, how we're going to leverage or maximize our talk with the ZBA. And so the goal of our discussion now, I think, is to really come to agreement on anything that we think is going to be an amendment or bylaw that we want to get on town meeting for this year. We really need to get started on that. If there's information that we need to do more research on, you know, let's, let's find out what that is and see if we can get that in a timely manner. So Elizabeth is showing her screen right now and we do all have a copy of this as well. If you want to look at it on your own. And she's highlighted in yellow items that are in the, in the near term for us. That means the next one to two years. And so that would be kind of our priority of what we want to work on. And again, the priorities were essentially in the action in that spreadsheet in the, in the plan itself. We also have the ability to rearrange any of those priorities because at this point, it's been a couple of years. We've completed some of those tasks, as you know. There's some of those tasks that are being led by another committee. And there's some of those that are longer range. And so we want to keep those in mind because anything we do in the short term, we hope feeds into the medium and long term as well. So if you are going through this list, Elizabeth, I'm not going to stop and talk at each one yet, but you'll see some of the, some of the big issues I think that come before the planning board have to do with affordable housing and workforce housing and what we can do to encourage development that is, is more for those reasons and more diverse development. And so you'll see that there's other other committees that are working on things as well. For example, you'll see in progress the demolition delay bylaw, the historic commission is looking into that. And then, so, so again, each of these goals is kind of separated into our, you know, seven or so sections with these specific actions. So if we just clicked down and looked at the, at the near term items, one was the neighborhood conservation districts we were going to talk about. One is the throw business redevelopment project. So we know that's going on. So we have to talk about, and we said that's going to be kind of not for this year's town meeting. Another one to do with self sustaining funding mechanisms is working with multiple committees about looking into payment in lieu of units as a tool to incentivize developers for, to create affordable housing. So we can come back and look at that. We've already got accessory dwelling units that we've worked on and then some PRD changes to the PRD too. So we've kind of worked on several of these goals already. And then we have another one that says, adopt zoning and other alternatives to protect unique features of existing village centers. And is there any more below that? Adopt policies, appropriate zoning and town practices that recognize the value of street and neighborhood trees. And so again, reviewing the effectiveness of the current bylaw and reminding everybody that I think on that December 8 meeting, Elizabeth reminded me, we're going to hear from Davy Tree then. So we'll be talking about the tree preservation bylaw, but what this is on here to say, do we need to make any amendments to it to make it more effective? And then line item 46 is alternatives such as modifying the FAR bylaw and building setback requirements as well as form based code. So we said we were going to look at that and we are going to be looking at its effectiveness when we talk to the ZBA. So and then reducing parking requirements near village centers and other specific areas while requiring multimodal features. And so so for each of those items, and there's about, you know, five big ones. And for the most part, you know, they're, they're related and they're certainly all related in that there are things that the planning board has use over. I think what we want to do tonight is decide which one or more than one of these, we want to move forward and what are the next steps we need to take in terms of getting any more information? Or whether it's going to require a bylaw amendment or not. So so if we were to start at the top of that list and and the neighborhood conservation districts. And that's, we talked about that just probably in the last year. So if you're new to the planning board, it's something that was kind of brought up more. And obviously, it's because it was in the long range plan, but it was kind of talked about on the planning board recently. Study the use of neighborhood conservation districts for potential positive and negative impacts in appropriate areas such as Conantham and some West Concord neighborhoods. And that the main focus here, the main goal would be as a regulatory tool to protect and preserve historical character and cultural resources. And I believe if this was the case, if there were to be a designation of a neighborhood conservation district, then is the idea that, that homes would not be as easily as a result, they would, they would be more subject to demolition delay bylaw?
Had a question?
Yeah, just, just to confirm, Elizabeth, that's, that's kind of why we would be looking at this.
So there's, there's different examples out there. The one neighborhood conservation district is, it is actually somewhat similar to adopting a historic district. And, you know, it does require significant buy-in from those property owners that are within whatever boundary district that you want to establish and developing criteria for that district. And I, I know enough about what it is to know that if the board wants to move forward, I'll have to learn quite a bit more. But
Okay.
I guess I'm it's not just adopting a zoning bylaw. It's, it's a much more intensive tool that requires property owner buy-in.
Well, and the reason I ask is I want to kind of figure out what's going to give us the biggest bang for our buck in terms of our goals, you know, in terms of if, if the concern is we want to see fewer homes demolished and, you know, is that what we're doing? And is this one of the biggest ways? If our, if our larger goal that we really want to work toward this year is more affordable housing and more diverse housing, you know, do we want to kind of look at a different part, part of this list, that kind of thing? So because I don't, we're not going to be able to do work on all these things this year. We don't have to, but kind of try, trying to prioritize even these last, you know, five or so in yellow. We're already working on the throw business district redevelopment and that's going to be for, you know, late 2021. So I wanted to see, you know, is there an appetite for neighborhood conservation district? You know, looking into that. And I think what we said was we would have to learn about it. And then at one town meeting, we would propose the concept, adopting the, the concept of a neighborhood conservation district. And then at future town meetings, you know, each neighborhood that wanted to be considered, you know, that would be a, its own warrant article at future meetings. That was my understanding. And so, you know, considering the other, you know, three or four items on the list, including payment in lieu, it was like payment in lieu. Did any of those things, you know, grab us as ways that we can really have an impact in the near future on kind of the biggest goal? Grab us as ways that we can really have an impact in the near future on kind of the biggest goals for the planning board?
So I. I do recall that we were gonna, since. One of the most. We're not going to be able to do these neighborhood districts without buy in from the property owners. So I think at some point we were going to send out. An inquiry to the property owners that was going to kind of survey the level of interest. Did that, does that? Did we do that? So sounds familiar?
It it has not been done now. Um, the the closest thing that has happened is. The Jenny Dugan neighborhood um looked into the potential, you know, some members of the Jenny Dugan neighborhood. Uh, looked into the potential of a neighborhood conservation district and um opted to. Go a the a different direction of um discussing with the Historic Districts Commission about establishing a new historic district.
So. But that's because there isn't a. Another, that's the only their only choice right now, right?
So, as I said, the neighborhood conservation district is um is much different than just adopting zoning. It um it requires um, you know, a extensive education and and extensive buy in from property owners.
So my recommendation on this one would be. To not forget about it, but to put it off till next year because. It's not, it doesn't feel like the right time to me to be putting this uh to to ask people to. Receive an inquiry like this. So that it, but I I do think the next step is, I I thought we had identified that as a next step. Maybe that was last year, but it that does feel to me like that would be the the next step. So I I I think maybe we should do that next year. Is is start to get information out there and start to feel people out on it.
You're right. I mean, it's it's an unusual year this year. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, so Elizabeth, I'm sorry, I've had to multitask on a couple of things here, but there is. The am I not mistaken that there's a sort of a public forum on the Jenny Dugan district to get that discussion going that's coming up?
There was a public forum.
I mean, my view on these neighborhood districts is is that this should be the neighborhoods coming to the planning board and asking for it proactively rather. And and maybe that discussion is going on and that this is in response to that, but um. Like you said, it it requires the it's not, it's not a top down thing. It requires the neighborhood coming together and saying, we want to sign up to this. We have the critical mass. And while we should be thinking about this because it's one of the recommendations in the long range plan. Until there is that evidence of a critical mass of of people saying, okay, we've met as a community and we want to put this in place. Then I I don't think it's right for us to take before town meeting.
So what, but. Part part of this, um and I see this as being part of what the board does um is that education piece. I agree a hundred and ten percent with Burton's comment that if you're, if there's going to be a neighborhood conservation district. It is going to be with the neighborhood um and it's going to be the neighborhood getting together and coming together and wanting that and bringing that forth to the planning board and going through the process. But I think the planning board's duty is um, we can create a, you know, a two page flyer. That, you know. Emphasizes the items in envision conquered about you preserving neighborhoods, neighborhood, character, smaller homes. Planning board just wants, you know, neighborhoods to be aware of, you know, this is a tool if the neighborhood wishes to come together. And wants to look into this, that they can, you know, talk to the planning board. But I I think you need to have, you know, a critical mass. That it can't just be one property owner in a neighborhood that wants to come to the planning board and say, you know, I think you should, you know, I think you should do this. There need, there needs to be a critical mass or or you'll just be continually spinning your wheels.
So Elizabeth, is there enough information available to you to put together like an FAQ? Or you're you're saying you're going to pull most of it from the long range plan? I'm just thinking about resources where people can research on their own. What other towns have done about neighborhood conservation issues? Because I want, I want to be cognizant of your time and where we're using your resources.
So more than more than likely, there's already those, you know, type of flyers or pamphlets available um and. The the board has your planning board goals and objectives. We can easily, you know, add all that information and then just direct people um to the website to to look at all that information. That wouldn't be a difficult. A difficult thing to do.
Thanks. And I think I heard another comment. I'm sorry I cut somebody off.
No, do you want to, do you want to make our goal more specific, which is to develop? A flyer that would go out to seed, to educate people and potentially seed seed interest? This year, instead of um, just to make it more specific?
Sure. I mean, we can, I can.
What's what's the timeline for that? Because we really were kind of putting it on you, Elizabeth, and then we're happy to review it, but I feel like. That's going to go back on you.
Developing of a flyer and putting and posting stuff to the website is not. That's not difficult.
Right, but I I'm just saying it's among other things. Would we say by March?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Um, any other board discussion about that particular item? Again, just like we said, it's not the end of this discussion, but in terms of how to get from A to B, A to Z. Um, I think that's a good step um in the right direction and it'll focus on some other stuff even more near terms. Seeing no other questions. Her. The goal here. So that's great. So I, we will be happy to look at your information when you're able to put that together. Thank you.
Kristen, I apologize again, I was brutally distracted, but could we maybe just refresh on the um. The proposed a bylaw amendments that we tabled. Uh, that may address some of these issues from the last town meeting that we would, we 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 had the intent of bringing forwards. Did you already touch on that?
No, but I I thought the only one we tabled was um two family.
Okay, well, if that's the case, and Elizabeth, is that, is that right? Was that the only one that?
That was the only one that got tabled, yes.
Right, okay.
And the plan would be to bring that this year. There's no reason.
Right.
Not to, right?
I think that specifically does go to, I mean, I guess it's, I was looking at the one about uh mixed use and density, and I guess that's not really mixed use, but it does go to the second part of that. Of around a dense developments in and around village centers. I think we were looking at Elizabeth. I I should remember all of this, but the two family was specifically, it wasn't town wide, was it? That. Residency. So that kind of goes towards that. Is that a fair statement uh on your line seventeen?
Yes, but I uh I thought.
I mean, we can certainly have a couple of actions that are supporting.
Oh, that got its own line. Okay. Okay, I see. I just didn't want to lose sight of that, that we were, that we 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 do have that in the bag, so to speak.
Ongoing.
We do. I mean, when I think about, and I think two family is important, you know, for a number of reasons that are captured here. I think a lot of the public comment that we get is about um large houses, about. Sustainability and about affordability of houses and. Thinking about the market value of houses, it's there's relatively little we can do right now because of the demand for housing in Concord. Other than. Limit size of homes, which goes to the FAR, because then that's, you know, price per square foot. There's um, you know, and so that's that's why this is limited. And the other other thing is to incentivize. Homeowners and builders to develop differently. And so I think, I think to me, those are important focuses um to either incentivize builders to develop workforce housing or. Is, you know, what can the planning board do to um help? And we're going to talk about this in in one of these lines. Help generate funds so that the town can really buy affordable housing. Because we're not going to get enough developers to build affordable housing. Through through, I believe, planning board mechanisms alone. So what what are the other ways that we can encourage that that kind of development? So that skipping ahead a little bit, but Burton, did you have another thought on line seventeen, which is the action item is. Was really based on the goal to renew and improve Concord's village centers as vital pedestrian friendly, economic and social hub. So that probably came, that's all probably the. You know, economic vitality um umbrella it might be under.
The only other comment I was going to say is you you had recited the various things we typically hear public comment on. And I would have added one thing to that, which I do do think goes to the mode of development, which is traffic and parking. We we hear about constantly and and what that means in terms of um increasing density in village centers or focusing on particular types of development. Like a project we saw earlier tonight, which could justify having fewer parking spaces, what that means for traffic, just something to be keeping in mind. I just want, you you had three things I and I.
Yeah. Okay, good. Um, that's, I think that's important. So. So I said, you know, um more affordable homes, um less demolition. Sustainability in in our developments and then traffic and parking. And and I just kind of listing those things and Burton, thank you for adding, just to kind of keep us. Framed for, you know, how we look at the actions that we're going to take, you know, you know, are they well within kind of those items? And so if anybody else sees them differently or has heard from public um differently about kind of, you know, how we're going to run with these things, please speak up. So so Burton, there's definitely a parking one on here that I think is probably something we can address and talk to now. If we go down a little bit. You know, we did skip over the um, that's okay, but see here, let's go to this one right here. About um, and this has to do with development approach to parking that balances the principles of sustainability with the town's economic goals. And so we've we've been talking several years, because a lot of people come in to our meetings, public can say. You can't do that use or you can't grant relief of parking. There's already not enough parking. And then we've had parking studies that say there's plenty of parking. You just have to walk, you know, another few minutes. And then there's other things like, hey, a town shuttle. So. One of the things that we're tasked with looking at is, you know, how could we reasonably um reduce parking requirements near the village centers? And other specific areas while requiring multimodal features like a shuttle or other things. Now, Elizabeth, you've got evaluate the M A P C parking analysis and determine the next steps. What um, when was the analysis for people that are new on this board or is it to be done? And what's the timeframe on on that?
The analysis was completed, I think it's been at least two years now.
Yeah. And didn't they come in and? Present to us? Those of us that were there. So what would the next steps be to, you know, get everybody on board who is certainly wasn't here two years ago? What do we do once we review that? Do we need additional consulting information about um proposing a change to our parking requirements?
I'd have to, I'd have to go back and refresh my memory on the recommendations that were made in that study.
So how about as a next step, um you send us all the parking study or or send it, show us where it is on the website where we can, we can find it. That might be even easier to. Help us to do that. Um, and then we will plan to review that and the recommendations. Because conceivably, there could be recommendations that we could make and bring to town meeting. Um, and it would require significant education based on certainly what I've heard during during public comment and meetings. Would anybody from the board like to ask any other questions about? About what we're talking about here, you know, if you're new or if you're new since that that parking analysis. Or other information that would be helpful for you to um kind of review this this particular item offline.
I have a question regarding this. Do we know what other towns are doing in regards to this? Parking requirements. Other towns similar to, let's say. Similar to Concord. I don't know, maybe Sudbury or. I don't know, we can make a list probably, just as a comparison, basically.
Yeah, I mean, we can research what other communities are doing. It's um. It it's somewhat challenging because. A lot of communities that are similar to Concord in in some ways. We don't have any other alternative transportation in the community, you know. You either, you know, walk or you can bike to the train station, but you know. That's it. We um, you know, in other communities, I mean, we hopefully will will continue to try to, you know, get some type of shuttle. Going in Concord. But those other communities that look at actually reducing the parking requirements. Have those established alternative transportation already going forward. So. I think for the the parking is, you know, parking is Burton said parking and traffic are. Near and dear to everybody's hearts. But I think uh somewhat to, you know, electric utility, all electric in a building. Some of it really is, you know, education and, you know, updating our parking regs based on the reality of. You know, changes. A lot of those parking requirements in our zoning bylaw are. Twenty thirty years old and and they're just, they're not valid anymore. So. You know, that's why you see your relief from parking being, you know, requested.
Right. Other other questions um that we can ask Elizabeth to kind of find out for us? I mean, I think we'll we'll have more questions after we all review the um. That parking analysis again and the recommendations too.
I just have a a question um based on um one of the, I went. Participated in one of the sessions on affordable housing and and zoning. And. Just listening as well to all the changes going on in Washington, it seems to me that um. The theme of exclusionary zoning is um. Starting to crop up or I'm starting to hear about that. And I think that um it's might be something, I don't know if we've. Ever reviewed that in terms of our zoning regulations, but it seems to me that I'm I'm sort of hearing that. At the moment that that there may be more focus on exclusionary zoning and I I don't know where that is in in terms of um if our plan. Overall, but I just wanted to bring up the topic and see if there's any areas where we've been addressing that.
Tell it, tell me a little bit about what you mean by that. I mean, when I, when I read about that. It seemed like um often exclusively single family homes tend to be exclusion and exclusionary housing. And, you know, so what we've been doing is trying to, um, we did the additional dwelling unit. We're trying to do the two family homes. And also mixed use. And to.
That those are areas where I would think we might, you know, want to continue to put emphasis.
Agreed. Um, I wonder if there's more explicit ways we can review our bylaws to, you know, to look at if if they are exclusionary in a way that we don't know. Or don't realize. Did did they say anything about that? Like in terms of the affordable housing discussion, was it primarily about um multifamily housing and? And the.
Primarily about about the single family.
So is there anything?
But I'm I'm not an expert there. It's just that I'm, you know, I'm I'm the new guy and it, but it's just, it seems to me that. That that was more of a theme. Sort of more top down. I mean, we're looking really what. Sort of more top down. I mean, we're looking really what, what people want in Concord. And I was, I'm saying, maybe we want to step back and say, are there any trends that maybe we are missing? In terms of what are, are, you know, sort of prepared for maybe our focus might need to switch a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. Look at line, look at line forty-eight or so there on the, and it's, um, encourage production of small scale affordable and workforce housing. That is sustainable, resilient and consistent with town character. I think we all want to do that. I think that's been the challenge. So there's a couple of action items. About multifamily housing in other zoning districts. And, um, you know, so that's our two family right now. Right now we're posing it in, in one district. And then also encourage infill development with affordable and sustainable. That is either passive or net zero housing. And we've got, um, you know, some ongoing work with. The Climate Action Advisory Board and Housing Groups and the, um, Sustainable Energy Committee. What's, what is meant by infill development, Elizabeth?
Kristin, I, um. So Marcia has her hand up and deals with our Regional Housing Services Office.
Excellent. Is she, can she talk?
Well, I can talk to a little bit of this. Um, Concord is a member of the West Metro Home Consortium. Which receives federal funds and one of the tasks that we are currently undertaking is an analysis. Of impediments, the things that stand in the way of promoting affordable housing. This issue of. Diversity and exclusion of our zoning is a topic that our consortium is discussing. There are thirteen communities that are involved. And we're looking at not only, um, the zoning, but also the testing and to see how, if, if our way of. Advertising, our way of our real estate agents, are they, are they looking at fair housing and how do we promote that? But Linda is correct that, uh, one of the issues is zoning. And so, um, I think if you are serious about. Creating more opportunities for housing such as the two family or looking at multifamily housing or looking at the P, expanding the P R D to be a more intensive development tool. Those would begin to address those issues of exclusion. And, um, currently, um, all of our zoning is focused primarily on single family. So it's, it's opportune to begin looking at that, but you're, you don't have to be, you don't have to go it alone is what I'm saying is. That there are other groups that are interested in this topic as well, and you could partner with them.
Thank you. Um, that's great. What, what's the timeline on that? When, when we hear, um. Any kind of summaries of, of what they've found and, and what might affect what we can do on the board?
Uh, this is a five-year plan. So it's, it's beginning that process. This analysis will be going to the federal, uh, program in January. And we will be having some further conversations locally about that. So I can forward information to you all about that.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a big topic. So I, I know it can't be rushed and also, you know, changes. You gotta, you gotta do the right changes and in the right order. So. Okay, Linda, that's a great question. Thanks for bringing that up. Um. So yes, remind me what's meant by infill development?
As far as housing?
Yeah, what, what's considered infill?
So. Give an example. You have an example readily, Marcia?
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking where you have, uh, an oversized lot. Or if two property owners were able to divide their property in a way that would create an additional lot, that would be infill. If you have a vacant lot that, and want to redevelop that, that's infill housing. So it's, it's adding to the fabric that you already have.
With the A and R. That we. Your A and R would be considered infill.
Okay.
Development, but a, again, it's that toss up between. You know, infill development and. That's likely only going to be one additional single family dwelling, but you've given that location. Everybody, you know, loves that property, wants it to stay exactly as it is. But on the other side of it, as far as exclusionary, you know, zoning, you know. Having a denser P R D there, you know. Would be that flip side of that. So it's, you know, that's why it is a challenging conversation.
Definitely, definitely. We, you know, um, we want to move the town toward the goals. That hopefully are, are goals that everybody can get behind, but we know everybody has, has different priorities. And change is hard for everyone. And, um, positive change. Kate, do you have something to add or question?
Um, I'm just. I'm always processing the, our, our dual goals of. Sustainability and also open space preservation and conserving the environment and conserving our. Quality of life we have here in terms of traffic and in terms of. Other environmental impacts and the goals of housing and building more housing and some of it has to do with smart growth. And. I'm just, I'm just wondering as a, as a planning board, is our, is our emphasis on housing? Or if in the long range plan, if we say. We, we want economic development. We want more diverse housing. We want, you know, more housing. You know, but not at the cost of the environment. We also want to preserve. The environment. We want to preserve open space where we have it, including in, you know, where it exists in between houses or on even on private properties. You know, do we see those equally as goals versus, well, we're primarily. Our goal, our, you know, we deal with development. Our board is about development. And other boards in town are about conservation. Because I just noticed that. It's, it seems so much more possible to build new things than to. Conserve something or conserve open space or not build something. So it, it tends to be like our goals tend to be more. Go more towards. You know, infill, more housing, bigger housing. And then we don't, but we, we never quite. Reconcile that with the cost on the environment. Is that just?
I mean, it's, it's, it's a good question. And I think, I think that's what we, what we always, and I'll, I'll open this up to the board, but it's certainly, oh, before, it's certainly a, um. Something that I think we always reckon with, when, with every project that comes before us, there's trade offs and we have. And about, you know, how to best do, um, serve the town. Within the limits of what we can do as a planning board. And so this, your point is important. Because now we're thinking about, we're taking a step back and thinking about the bigger picture and making, you know, making that longer term plan. The other thing is we did have a smart growth. Talk a few years ago, uh, maybe the regional housing office came and talked to us and, and that. Report might still be available to us that, that I thought was, was useful. If we can find that and send that out again. But, but let me, let other members speak to, to Kate's question about, you know, your. You know, how do we balance these things?
Okay, I would say I, I appreciate the, this, the. Sort of the sentiment in your question. And for me, I, I, I knew the planning board kind of has two roles, one of which is almost sort of a. An adjudicatory role can, being as a, either the final decision maker or a rec, a body that recommends to the Z B A. On the application of particular projects, um, the, the application of our existing zoning rules to particular product, projects. We also have sort of a legislative role of, this is going to sound overly grandiose, but legislative role in, in terms of seeing the things that are being expressed in the town. Uh, as desires and, and then, and, and promulgating that through our zoning code, right? And I think that in terms of understanding what breaks down between the planning board and other committees, it's really helpful. I, I, the exercise we went through in looking at the long range plan. And looking at what were the. The, sort of the items that were flagged and that's reflected in this chart here. That we, that in the spreadsheet that we're looking at, the items that were flagged as being within the scope of the planning board in there. And there are lots of things that long range plan was developed, not so much thinking about creating specific action item, it's action items for specific boards. But overall action items. And then that's broken down by each board looking at it and saying, I think that's one for us, right? So there have been instances and just to use an example, the tree preservation by law, right? Before that, we were just, we didn't have a, a method of telling developers, we wanted to keep more trees, but we had an overarching. Goal for preserving more of our natural environment and the development of property. So the planning board said. We're going to do a tree preservation by law. And, and this is now the opportunity to look at, okay, so what came out of that, out of the long range plan? People, uh, I, I would say in the last long range plan, there was a shift from the one prior, a little bit away from land conservation and with more of a focus on. Affordable housing, if you were to provide broad brushstrokes to, to characterize it. And, uh, and, and new methods and, and, and new models of development as opposed to just preserving land. And then we can look at that and say, well, some of this stuff is, is, is really the jurist, you know, if you're looking for a funding mechanism for affordable housing, maybe that's better. Uh, handled by FinCom or the how, that, you know, the housing, uh, committees, or the housing or, uh. Organization boards and the like in town. But maybe what we can also look at is, is providing incentives. For a developer so that they've got a new set of rules that they can operate in, which changes the, uh. The, the return on investment to allow affordable housing to be more worthwhile. So if you're looking for, what's our guiding document, I would really say, go back and look at the long range plan and, and pull out the items that. Are flagged as being potential planning board items. Um, and there, there's likely to be overlap with other committees, but. What Elizabeth has here in the spreadsheet, um, I think. Is guiding us in that legislative function to say, okay, so here are areas where as the planning board, unlike the Z B A, which the Z B A just, you know, they just adjudicate. The planning board gets to say, this is a change of direction we want to do.
Thanks Burton. Yeah, thank you.
Um, I wanna, I wanna kind of come back to the F A R one, um, right before we kind of move on to our discussion about the, um. Our meeting with the Z B A. But if you go to line twenty-six and it's. I, I want to hear what the board thinks about, uh, and kind of picking up on what Burton was just saying. What is our role in self-staining funding mechanisms to support housing targets? We haven't had this discussion that I recall. About payment in lieu of units as a tool to incentivize developers. And we have a little bit in terms of. In the past, uh, I, I don't know. I guess I want to, I would like some help in setting this up, maybe from Elizabeth. You know, for, for people who are newer to the board. We, we do have requirements for affordable units in some of our bylaws, you know? What's, what's the mechanism do that we have right now available? If, if people, do they have to do that? Is it only for subdivisions or P R Ds? Can you just kind of give us that? That elevator pitch about when affordable housing units are required and if there is some sort of option right now for payment in lieu of that.
So currently there's the provision, um, in the zoning bylaw. Uh, I mean, in the subdivision rules and regs, um, for the reservation of land for housing and. In recent case, you know, there was. Monson, uh, Monson Road Extension, the town. Reserved one lot and towards the end of the, you know, third year. The developer approached the town, um, for a payment in lieu to release that restriction. We provided funds. Specifically for affordable housing. The town also has the inclusionary. Housing by law. Which talks about the, um, also the reservation of lots. This was adopted in nineteen eighty-seven. And it only goes back to residential subdivisions. There's nothing in this currently in the zoning bylaw that allows for a payment in lieu of affordable units.
Thanks. I don't know if you remember, but, um. Uh, it came to town meeting at, um, a couple of years ago, the Black Birch Development. And, um, there the developer offered a payment in lieu of, um. Affordable, excuse me, an affordable unit. And that was turned down by town meeting, as I recall, um, in the, and the town meeting preferred. Having an inclusionary unit of affordable housing rather than a payment in lieu. And, and I think the concern has always been with payments in lieu. Is that then all of a sudden you, you end up. Having a, instead of inclusionary affordable housing, you, you end up. Then potentially, um, running into a situation where you, you then have. A concentration of affordable housing, which I, I don't think is. Is generally what we've strived for in Concord. But again, that's just my recollection of, of town meeting a few years ago.
So that, that is correct. That example is, I'm going to say the one off.
Okay, I remember.
It's, it's, um, specific. Only to, um. It's. In the P R D bylaw, it's, um, a special provision for an alternative P R D. And it is only in the limited industrial park district, which is Forest Ridge Road. And that's the, the only project that requires, you know, to go to town meeting for a P R D and. Because it's this alternative P R D, there's, you know. That was the proposal that they were coming, putting forth to town meeting. And you are correct, town meeting did turn down, you know. That proposal to pay, have payment in lieu. But for other projects, you know, the standard P R D or. The combined business residence, combined business residence industrial, um, there is no payment in lieu provision.
From my vantage point, that is the one time that the town itself spoke as to a preference. It was a revealed preference that. Payment at Lou was, was not the first choice.
Which that, that is a, a consistent. You know, comment in housing groups and in, in other communities, it's. You know, if you're going to have a housing development and there's a affordable housing requirement, there should be affordable housing. In that development, um, currently. Most of the time it's more expensive to, um, build an affordable unit in a project. Than it is for, um, you know, a payment in lieu. And then the town going out and building it, especially in Concord because of the land costs. In, in other communities, it, you know, further out west. It may make perf, perfect sense because the land costs, you know, aren't like they are in Concord.
So what would, what would our role be here, um, in investigating whether we want to propose a, a change to our bylaws? To allow for payment in lieu of units? Would we? Be working with housing offices? I know you say we're, you know, work with the select board and they afford the housing trust. Like, what are, what are some steps that we would take?
Um, so I'll. Defer back to Marcia if I'm incorrect, but more than likely, as the town moves forward and updating their housing production plan, that's. Usually always an element in a housing production plan as a, an option. And as you go through developing the housing production plan, that's where you bring in FinCom and Select Board and. Talk about, you know, what are the financial implications and also the affordable housing trust and the. Concord. Was it Housing? Foundation and the Concord Housing Development Corporation. So they, they all come together and have that conversation. Including the Concord Housing Authority. It, it's, they, you know, there may be a payment in lieu where it. You know, it goes to the Concord Housing Authority first, or I don't know, but it, it definitely has to start with. A select board and FinCom. Because it, that's, you know, that just comes down to the financial aspects of things. And, you know, what is that breakdown? What is that balance between the developer having to build a house, an affordable house in a project and giving money where the cost of land is so high in Concord?
Marsha? Let me add the, we are seeking funds this year for housing plan production, or housing production plan. And from the community preservation funds that will be awarded hopefully in, with through town meeting action in June and funds would be available in July. So that, that whole conversation will be taking place over the course of 2021, latter portion of 2021 to 2022. And maybe this could be a conversation that is added to that discussion so that you might have better direction in, in moving forward. I know that for small developments such as the one that Patrick Clary recommended or is moving forward with. The planning board has adopted language for combined business residential in those certain districts that if you have four units or less, you don't have to provide an affordable unit. Well, the, the going between four and eight, any number more than, more than four, but less than eight, you're still providing 25% affordable, more than 25% affordable. And so there might be an opportunity in those situations to consider payment in lieu because it's so cost prohibitive to create that affordable unit in a, in a realistic way. Patrick had to go to eight units and he's still, he's at 25%. Two out of the eight will be affordable. So that's one area where you might consider it, but it could be part of the conversation with the housing production plan.
Thank you. So should we make a note on that line item that that's going to be like a 2021, 22 item? So what I'm hearing as kind of near, near term, if we were to prioritize those are tree preservation by law and whether we need to make any changes to it. And we're going to hear about that in December. Parking, but that's a bigger fish to fry because we also need to think about other, other modes of transportation. And right now, we're just so hampered by nobody being able to be near each other. And then the other, the other items I'm hearing that kind of we're waiting a little bit from, waiting kind of for some more information. I do have a question about that line item 35. Adopt zoning and other alternatives to protect unique features of existing village centers. And this is in an effort to preserve Concord's current combination of land uses and consider design standards that preserve the town's natural New England character. So again, hopefully all of these actions kind of are working together, you know, and they build on each other. One of them slated, slated for the near term was what I just mentioned. But we, we did, we do now have formula bylaws, formula business bylaws in West Concord Village Center and Concord Center. Are there any other types of zoning and other alternatives that, that we should be looking into? Or how would we investigate other alternatives for those village centers?
So this line item identified as near was from the previous discussion. And I, and it didn't go any further than that. So I left it as near, but I I leave it up to the board to think about ways other than what you're doing.
And anybody on the board have some other suggestions?
I mean, Marsha and I can brainstorm about this. And I can come back to the board with.
I mean, I, I'm limited on kind of my, my greater knowledge of what the options are. So, so that would be helpful for me. Also, in this kind of the same bucket here, which is all under land use, no, not as, yeah, it's all under land use, is is about considering the expansion of tree preservation by law to exact, to protect existing trees in neighborhoods. So we are going to, you know, learn a little bit more about the effectiveness of the tree preservation by law. That's been in effect for, is it two years yet? Been two years, yeah. So we'll learn about that in December and then we can decide if, if there's something we want to propose for that. Anything else? Do anybody have other questions or information that we'd like before December 8th meeting about the tree preservation by law? I mean, somebody's coming to let us know what they've seen so far. But do we need, is Davy Tree, I assume they're going to tell us about how many properties this has impacted and what kind of properties, whether they were, you know, single family or subdivisions or PRDs? I mean, like, are they going to have it broken down like that? Because I think it would be helpful to have that kind of data.
No, they won't, but I can, I can see if Nancy and Heather can help me put together.
If, if, if that's something you could put together, then we could see where it's being applied and, and and what, what we're missing, I think, would be, would be helpful.
Well, I, I can tell you the breakdown is two PRDs and one subdivision and everything else is a single family dwelling lot.
Yeah.
So I don't. Most, most everybody mitigates on site. We've only had two payment of fees as mitigation. So.
Interesting. Okay. Then the last, you know, so there's, there's a couple of other things on the items and land use that are listed under, under other people's committees. For example, study the possibility of linking renewable energy and energy efficiency requirements on new large home construction to financing of workforce housing. Right now, that's listed as, you know, the Climate Action Advisory Committee is looking at that and the Sustainable Energy Committee. And I guess what we would do is wait, await recommendations and then see how the planning board might adopt those. In terms of how we're incorporating more sustainability or getting to that point where in the discussion we had today, you know, how we are going to all electric development, if we can't have a bylaw that prohibits fossil fuel hookups, you know? So what are some other ways? And I guess I would, I want to see if the board has other questions. And then I wanted to open it up to public comment, particularly if, you know, I know we received some information from Gary Kleiman. And if he's on the line, I, I would ask him to give us a little synopsis and then we can talk about it another time to, you know, talk about. Does the board have any other, you know, guidance or requests for information about any of these near term goals that we're trying to do? Again, we're trying to advance to the point where if there's an amendment to a bylaw or a new bylaw that we need to starting to identify what that is, what that change is going to make, why we need to make the change and, and kind of work towards that drafting of that letter of that, that change. Anything jumping out at people and based on what we've talked about so far tonight?
I think the most important thing, I think it's really important to see what we can do with FAR. And so I, I think, so we're going to talk about that next on the agenda in terms of the joint meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So that's, that's helpful though. So that's what, that was what you think is really helpful or, you know, like an important role that we can play. Other, other folks too, you know, what's jumping out at you at, at what the planning board can do this year to really move us forward?
It's all good.
I, I'll take the easy here. Just kidding. All right. So let me open it up to public comment. I know there's just a few, few folks on the line, but, but we would like to hear from you again. What we're talking about is actions that the planning board can take in the, in the next year to move us towards our long, long range goals. So if there's anyone on the line that would like to make a comment about this, you can raise your hand and we'll call on you. This won't be the last time, but I just want to give people an opportunity. After this, we're going to talk about FAR and our joint meeting that we're going to have with the zoning board of appeals in December. And if people, if, if the members of the board, I'm sorry, we just sent out a message from Gary Kleiman today about kind of the work that's being done on looking at what other towns are doing as more sustainable building. And so there was a, a really well documented description of, of things that other towns are doing. And so we can certainly schedule that at another time to kind of hear more about what's, I don't know if we know what's working in the other towns, but what they're doing. And then that might certainly give us some ideas. And so for example, I'm just seeing if there's any hands that are up. For, for example, he put together, what he said is called Green Zoning Initiative. And Rocky Mountain Institute is, has that building electrification accelerator. So it's right in line with kind of what we're doing. And so there's some folks from the town that are, are working on this accelerator to kind of learn what they can and take it back to Concord. Gary is hoping that he has the chance to discuss this with our group so that we could really take some of these ideas that are working and the accelerator is, is benefit from them and leverage that. And some of the things were put together was Massachusetts incentive, incentives and policies for sustainable buildings, options and case studies for a number of things. And the incentives could be density bonuses or fee reductions or tax abatements. There could be, you know, things that, you know, for building LEED certified or for using heat pump technology. You know, so, so it's a really nice, long list of what they put together. And then also to consider or creating overlay districts or you know, so like a number of, of different types of options. I thought he had something in here. I thought it included, I guess it's mostly incentive, which is the, the better way to go. So look at that document, because I'm sorry, it just came out today. But, but I think that will kind of help our discussion about sustainability and all electric. So the, any other comments about this? We have some action items. Elizabeth is going to send us all the parking analysis and also the smart growth presentation that both of those are a couple of years old. So it would be fresh for some of the new people on this board. That'll kind of refresh our, our memory. Or, or, you know, keep us in line for this. We've got a tree preservation by law that we'll be talking about in the meeting in December. We are, in terms of affordable housing, Concord is part of this consortium. And Marcia is going to keep us informed of this over the next few years. Neighborhood Conservation District, Elizabeth is going to put together an educational document and we can look at that before it's posted to the website. So there's actions, I feel like most of them fall on Elizabeth. But we wanted to decide if any of those need to go to the next step. And we need to do that in that, in the relative near term.
Kristin, Susan raised her hand.
Oh, good. Susan, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. All right. I'm trying to get the video going, but maybe it's not going to work. Okay. At any rate, this is Susan Malodzenic. I'm a resident at 392 Border Road in Concord. And I also, I work at Massachusetts Clean Energy Center. And we're the quasi state agency that helps with, you know, green building projects and a multitude of other clean energy initiatives in the state of Massachusetts. And because Concord has a municipal light plant, the incentives that MASTC might be able to give to other communities to incent green building and the like. Concord is not eligible because we're not paying into this, this fund that the other utilities kind of aggregate for those kinds of programs. And those, that funding funds MASTC. So long story short, because we have a municipal light plant, some of the things that MASTC or MAST Save might be able to fund for Concord are kind of off the table. But it does raise some interesting opportunities where the municipal light plant may be able to help fund some greener development in Concord. And specifically because CMLP is going to benefit from the rate payers, like the electric rate payers who would now be, you know, operating a 100% green building. It seems like any sort of incentives they gave would come back to them, you know, even more multiplied because they'd have this ongoing revenue stream from a building that maybe would ordinarily be on natural gas or God forbid, oil. That money is going to be coming to CMLP. So I'm just thinking if there's a way for the planning board to work with CMLP to have an array of different incentives for builders or some kind of mechanism where we are clearly showing that, you know, the energy entity in Concord wants to work with builders to create these kinds of electrified buildings.
Thank you. That, no, that's great. And I know Brian Folds, I think, just joined the, the light plant board. So I'm sure he's, he's probably thinking that way as well, coming from the Climate Action Advisory Board. So that's, that's good.
Okay.
All right. Questions, comments, board? Because we, we didn't touch too much on sustainability. I think we'll have some more discussion. We'll see if we can get Gary or one of the folks that are working with that RMI accelerator to give us kind of a condensed version of what they're seeing as effective. But let's, let's not lose that thread. So the last piece, I believe, in terms of encouraging production of small scale affordable and workforce housing that is sustainable, resilient and consistent with town character. The last action item that we didn't talk about yet was consider zoning alternatives such as modifying the FAR bylaw and building setback requirements as well as form based code. So right now, we're planning to meet with the ZBA and the date of that is December. Anybody?
I think it's the 14th.
December 14th. Yep. Oh, so the afternoon of December 14th, right? So we're meeting with the ZBA. What?
14th? No, hang on a second.
That's what I have.
Monday, the 14th?
Yep.
No.
Now, did it change? I thought that's what I had in my calendar.
Oh, maybe it. I'll have to look on my calendar. Go ahead.
So we're meeting with them in December. And I want to make sure that if we have questions that we want to research in terms of number of properties this affects, you know, that we can ask Elizabeth if she has time to kind of bring that to us. So we have the data that we want to have this discussion, but also kind of to identify what we want to get out from this discussion. So we're meeting with the ZBA in, in part because we want to make sure kind of we're, we're working together. We don't just throw things over the fence to them. So it's an opportunity to make sure we're all kind of working in the same direction and supporting each other. But also specifically, I think our questions were, you know, hey, at, at the planning level, we're getting a lot of questions about, you know, why are there so many big houses in Concord? And so we're asking the ZBA, why are you, you know, approving so many, you know, of these additions? But I want to make sure that we kind of have some goals for the meeting so that we can make a productive use of that time. So let me ask, you know, folks, what they think you would like to get out of this meeting specific to this, this goal that we have here, this action item too.
So Kristen, before you get, so at the last Board of Appeals meeting, was that two weeks ago? Yeah. The Board of Appeals had the same conversation and, you know, getting prepared for the meeting with the planning board. And I informed them, you know, some of the things that the planning board that I was thinking about as far as moving forward, the planning board will definitely have a warrant article for the two family and residency will have. We'll have a warrant article for the floodplain, updating the floodplain conservancy district with the model bylaw. Two items that have just risen up because of, you know, projects that are, that come through. We have the groundwater conservancy district and there's a list of prohibited uses. And then there's list of uses that don't require a special permit and uses that do require a special permit. And all of the uses that do require a special permit, you know, when this was originally adopted, deal with water quality issues, hazardous materials, you know, sludge and open pits and septic systems greater than 440 gallons per day, per acre. There's nothing in there about water quantity and projects that may have an impact on the town's public water supply and quantity. So that was something I was going to speak to the Public Works Director about, get his input on, you know, whether the groundwater conservancy district should be amended to think about uses that could impact quantity, not just quality. Because the purpose that is in the bylaw talks about quantity and quality and, you know, impact to our public water supply and ability to provide water. So that was something I was going to talk to him about. The other item was we have an earth removal bylaw. Most communities, it's an earth removal bylaw and earth filling bylaw. The impacts you get with removal are, many of them are exactly the same with somebody bringing in fill. And I think the original earth removal bylaw was, a lot of times zoning is adopted as a reactive measure and it could have been for, you know, there used to be some earth removal, actual earth removal operations. There was one on Strawberry Hill Road for a while and there's been others in the community. So it might have, that might have been, you know, that reactive reason. But it doesn't deal with, you know, if somebody wanted to come in and bring, you know, 100 cubic yards of fill in, the impacts would be the same as if somebody's taking 100, you know, thousand cubic yards out. So that was just something I was going to do a little bit more research in. And then talking with the Board of Appeals about the floor area ratio bylaw and having them provide the planning board their perspective on how it's, you know, how it's been working, if it's been working. How has it, you know, how has it impacted, you know, that conversation or the permits that come before them? And and how they, you know, if it, if it isn't working, you know, where, where is that disconnect? And Kristin, your comment about, you know, people still say there's these large homes. Well, in the, in the past three to four years or three years, the Board of Appeals has really established a method to reviewing those projects where somebody comes in for a special permit to expand a house greater than 50%. And really looking at the reason that they're coming before, you know, what the non-conformity for the lot, whether it's, you know, frontage or setbacks or area. And I'm looking at doing an analysis of the neighborhood and the changes in the neighborhood. So I'm having them explain to the board, you know, how that review process and, and basically providing a method for them to equally look at these projects as they come before them. And then lastly, while Mr. Johnson is no longer on the planning board, he still has a great affinity and love for the floor area ratio bylaw. And I have provided him with an extensive amount of information. Actually, we were able to provide him spreadsheets from the building department of all of the new homes and the square footages of new homes since 2016. So that's before the bylaw was enacted and then all the way up to currently. As well as when the floor area ratio bylaw was adopted, we worked with the building department to create, it's a, you know, it's a gross floor area and floor area ratio worksheet. And we were able to provide him all of those worksheets for special permits that have been filed with the Board of Appeals. So Matt is going to take that information and I imagine do an amazing plot diagram and chart and spreadsheet for that, the meeting on the 14th, which is at 3:00 PM, by the way.
Thank you. The, the thing that I would like to see that we're not going to be able to get is I would like to see energy usage and how energy usage has changed in the town over time. But that, that I don't know that we're not going to get because I, that's my, one of my concerns is that, you know, large homes may, hopefully are better built, but for the most part, it's, they're quite large energy users, but.
That was something that the Climate Action Advisory looked at to, or attempted to look into some time back. I don't know how successful they were.
Interesting.
Because they were looking at a holistic approach in terms of cars, houses, everything as far as what Concord was using.
I can tell you anecdotal, anecdotally that CMLP line crew does not put in smaller transformers.
Right.
They're always getting bigger.
Right. Well, thank you for that summary and I'm glad that the ZBA has already kind of given some thought to that. So let's make sure that this board has a chance to kind of formulate the questions that we want to ask the ZBA. Or, you know, you heard kind of the information that's going to be collected in preparation for that meeting. Are there other items that you'd like to have before that meeting so that we really maximize that time? And Kate, did you have specific questions about the FAR bylaw and?
My specific question is, to what extent it's a tool to control mansionization in our town? And it sounds like the right people are in charge of doing some powerful assessments for us. So yeah, I just, I didn't, I didn't quite know how to prepare for that meeting, but it sounds like I'm going to be on the receiving end of information, which is great. So I'm looking forward to it.
The board, your previous conversation, you know, I can, I can only give you, you know, my observation and opinion. The Board of Appeals, I think, has had three, three or four applications for waivers to exceed the FAR. And there for things like 125 square foot dormer that's got, you know, a ceiling height of greater than 68 or, you know, a kitchen bump out to allow, you know, a full size bay window. Or, you know, they've, they've all been less than, you know, less than 200 square feet going over. And all of the other, you know, all of the other projects or applications that come before the Board of Appeals for the special permit for over 50%. You know, we have all of those worksheets. I'm going to, I mean, I'm going to say, you know, if there's 50, 58 of those projects or applications before the Board of Appeals since 2016, I'm going to say maybe, you know, less than a quarter of them ever get anywhere near the FAR.
Yeah, if you look at the FAR bylaw and do the calculations, you can build really big houses on even a quarter acre. You can, you can, and on an acre, you can build a lot. So, so there's two things that, that we might be placed. So there's the FAR bylaw and you, I think you can just do the calculation, Elizabeth, right? I mean, and you could probably tell us, this is the maximum size for each of these lots, quarter lot or quarter acre, half acre, you know, whatever. And, and it's huge. And then, then there's the other piece, which is the 50% expansion. So there's the two different aspects, just for our own knowledge, when we're talking about things in terms of large, large homes, I guess I should say.
Well, so like the Board of Appeals recently, you know, it's, it was an 1100 square foot home. And it was a young family that bought it that had three kids. And they, you know, increased the square footage of the house to, you know, 3,000 square feet. In the neighborhood it was in, that's not even close to being, and it happened to be a non-conforming lot surrounded by all conforming lots that all had, you know, 5,000 square foot homes. So but it was, it wasn't still nowhere near the, you know, the FAR for, you know, for that lot. So those are kind of the things that the Board of Appeals, you know, is, is looking at.
So I'm sorry, I'm feeling a little bit. So are you saying that the FAR is not, like lowering the FAR, making a change to the FAR is not useful to think about for mansionization because it's not relevant to what's impacting the size of the home? Or are you, are you saying it is?
Currently, I don't think the floor area ratio has a significant impact.
So do you think that we could potentially lower it?
I think that's a conversation that you need to have with the Board of Appeals.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I just wasn't, I wasn't connecting the, what you just said about some of what is actually, the way that they're actually processing applications with and what that means about the impact of a potential impact of a floor ratio, but.
So there's two mechanisms. There's the, you know, expansion of a dwelling on a non-conforming lot greater than 50%.
Yeah.
In the floor area ratio.
Yeah.
Projects that are coming through for a special permit to expand over 50%.
Yeah.
Most of them don't even, wouldn't even come, what they want to do over 50%, doesn't even come close to the floor area ratio. There was a recent project where, you know, it was you know, 3,000 square foot home and they wanted to go over, you know, over 6,000 square feet, but the floor ratio was like 8,500. So.
Okay. So that's good. So that, that lends support to the idea of bringing it down. Okay.
I think that's a conversation you should have with the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
And so, you know, Burton made the point previously, it's, you know, the Board of Appeals, you know, is, you know, they just review these based on what's in the zoning bylaw. And I think it's not their job to tell you how to, how to do it. It's their job to tell you what is working, what they don't think is working and can provide the planning board, you know, their feedback on what they think, you know, might be a way to, you know, address something if it's not working. And then I think it's, you know, the planning board and the conversations with everybody else on, okay, so we know what this isn't really working. Here's the data to, you know, support that and have the conversation with, you know, all right, so how do we go about fixing it?
And to that end, I think we need to say, when we say it's not working, I think we need to define what it is that's, you know, like, you know, homes are too large or homes are too, use too much energy, but without measurement of these things, how can we say if something is or isn't working? And then how can we measure the change that we make and if it is working? So I feel like we need to kind of define what it is we're working towards. Is it smaller homes in terms of square footage? And if so, why is that? Is it, you know, is it energy usage? Are we able to quantify that on a square foot basis and things like that? That I think is just, is a lot tougher to wrap our heads around with the data that we have. But I, you know, if anyone on the board has some suggestions about, you know, kind of those goals so that we can, you know, specifically ask the ZBA, what is working?
Well, I guess one way to do it is to just benchmark against what other surrounding communities are, have in terms of FAR. Instead of trying to decide what, what's too big or, you know, it's big enough. Just try to benchmark.
And so my understanding was, and what year did the FAR go in? I thought it was longer than four years ago.
2016.
Really? Okay, I thought it was, but so I am assuming that the FAR went into effect because, or was proposed to limit the size of houses, right? Okay. And so they must have been trying to, were, were houses built larger than that before? Because that's, but I guess we'll see that from the spreadsheet. So that, that I'll be curious to know about that because it would totally surprise me if when Matt looks at those numbers that, that square footage of homes after 2016 have gone down from prior to 2016. There's no way. So, so if you were to look at that data alone, which I don't have in front of me, so I'm just speculating, it would seem to say that the floor area ratio was not effective in limiting or in, in encouraging smaller home development, if that was the measure of why it went into effect in 2016.
Also, I think the problem is with, with having one FAR for all of Concord. I think that is a problem because I mean, it is a function of the size of the land and you need a certain, I mean, for small lots, you need a certain size of house. You cannot get smaller than a certain square foot of a house. But but then there are very large lots, basically, that you can build, you know, 10, 15,000 square foot houses. And so, so basically FAR doesn't work. I think maybe a modification of the FAR might, might be the answer to limit the size. If that's, that's the main goal of the FAR, to limit the size of the houses. We need to have, I mentioned this before, maybe there's some sort of a sliding scale of different neighborhoods, basically. Where the FAR might make more. I mean, it might make more sense to have, for example, a smaller number of FAR in places where lots are much larger and higher number of FAR when lots are smaller. So I think, I think it's much more nuanced than that. That's, that's why it's not having an impact, I think, without looking at the data. But my, my guess is that's, that's a problem.
Thanks. And I'm just looking up, I was just searching and Matt's presentation for, for town meeting is, is on the website. And so that I think is, is useful in terms of, you know, reminding people why it went into that. And then, you know, what the, what some of the examples are of what would fit and things like that. So Elizabeth, I'm happy to send you that link if you want to send it with, out with everybody else too. I mean, I'm sure you have it, but I just have it now. Any other, those are good questions and we will meet again on December 8th before, you know, before you meet with the ZBA on the 14th. So I think these are great discussions and great conversations. So I'm looking forward to that meeting. Is there anything else that, from members of the planning board? I'll open it up to final public comment, but anything else that people want to say on this topic or any, any other burning decisions? Any committee or staff updates? Oh, yes, Kate.
I participated in, I listened in on the CATS committee as I am supposed to do. And I don't know if Linda Escobedo is on the phone, but I appreciated her looping me into those Zoom calls. The Secretary of Economic Development was on the last call and there was some interesting information. and there was some interesting information about the, some grants that they're doing to the COVID-related, to keep towns and small towns going. And so there was, there's one item that was monies that were going out for local planning efforts, for recovery strategies, for impacts to town. So I don't know if that was something that we could look into possibly benefiting from. The other, the other just idea was that there was money going out for shared streets to help people build out, to help businesses build out outdoor space, like outdoor dining, for example. And it just made me think about, thinking of this time as a reason to build out our outdoor spaces, potentially at the cost of, you know, parking and car-oriented facilities. That could be a potential long-term, something that sticks long-term. So it's kind of interesting to think about. And, oh, sorry. And, and the other thing was that this project in Lincoln came up. That was the subject of an MAPC study around the Lincoln train station to a smart growth study to increase housing and, and multi, multi-use kind of infill building. And that was actually sort of decisively shut down by some of the neighborhoods because of concerns about traffic. And it was just kind of interesting to hear about. And I was wondering if there was, it would have been, it might be interesting to look into what happened there and think about what's, how our Thro Depot is going to play out. And that's it.
Thank you. Any public comment? If you have a comment, you can raise your hand. We can call on you. Linda.
Good evening, everyone. Linda Escobedo, Select Board, but speaking for myself. I just want to applaud you for, you know, this is, you've had a real workout tonight in terms of reviewing, you know, these action items in the, the envisioned Concord and the attention that you're giving, that is exactly what the Select Board wants to see. So thank you so much for all the work you're doing.
Thanks. And, and thanks for hanging out to the bitter end. Any other public comment from our, our hearty few people? So Elizabeth, on our next meeting, remind, remind us what we have again, so we know what to look forward to, please.
So for your December 8th meeting?
Yep.
You'll have the reviewing agents from Davy Tree. And the board previously got a memo and information from them, but I'll make sure that you have it again for your packet. And then Chris from MAPC will be back to do the next installment for the Thro Depot discussion. And then you will have the 1440, 1450 Main Street definitive plan. And...
So you're saying it's going to be a short meeting? Between those two things, those...
That's plenty.
A lot of time.
That's, that's what you have so far.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. And if there's nothing further, at 9:55, we will adjourn and we'll be, we'll be ready for December 8th.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Elizabeth.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. You too.